Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Present.
Billy King.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Ashley Jones is absent.
Okay, is there a move to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the agenda is approved. Moving on to the action items.
Oh, do we need to ask Billy on the vote?
Billy, did you want to approve the agenda?
I approve.
All right, we'll add you to the list. And next up then would be for Pam to administer the oath of office to our newest board member, Bill Lowe, so they'll come forward here and we'll get that process going.
Right hand, right after me, please. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of school director.
The duties of school director.
In and for the Raymore Peculiar R2 School District.
In and for the R2 Raymore Peculiar School District.
County of Cass.
County of Cass.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to law.
According to law.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to board reorganization.
Okay, now that we've got a full board again, it'd be appropriate time to reorganize. And as everyone recalls, Kim Bailey was serving as president and Paul's been filling in, acting in that role as the vice president. And so now that we've fully placed the board again, it's time to select, re-select officers, if you will. And I'll handle the election of president and then whoever gets selected will handle then the election of vice president. So at this point, I'd open for nominations for president.
I'd like to nominate Ruth Johnson.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor, Ruth Johnson for president, raise your hand. Billy, how do you vote?
My hand is raised.
Excellent. All right, so that's 6-0 vote. Ruth, I'll turn it over to you for vice president.
Okay, so next up, we would be voting for vice president. Do I hear a motion for vice president?
Nominate Paul.
Do I hear any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Paul being vice president, raise your hand. You can vote yourself.
Billy, do you vote for Paul for vice president?
I do, yes.
So are you abstaining then?
I'm abstaining.
All right.
Do we need to do secretary and treasurer as well?
They'll remain as they are. So we'll continue with those positions as they are.
All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda is our Project Lead the Way expansion.
So I'll talk a little bit collectively about this group of agenda items. They are all somewhat related in that within our strategic plan that we adopted last year, all of these different programs have been at least mentioned or contemplated in our strategic planning effort or fall under an umbrella within that strategic planning effort. So we've got a collection of these tonight, five in total, to have discussions with you to try to get some sense of where we are and how we want to move forward from now till at least through the budget planning process next spring and maybe on into future years. I would just generally characterize this group of all, they're all things that we can be supportive of as an administrative team. It's just a matter of if now is the right time to move forward with any of these. Some of them are more time sensitive than others. And I'll give you an example, anything that would involve a certified staff member, the sooner we can make a decision and get started, the better chance we're going to have to get a good candidate. And to that end, when we get done with our conversation tonight, I'm going to circle back with you and talk about, okay, you know, which of these are we ready to move forward on now because as early as next week's meeting, we might want to bring forward, or December's meeting at the latest, bring forward a recommendation for some of the positions we're talking about so that we can try to get out and get a good candidate sooner rather than later. So I don't know that any of this will be earth shattering or surprising because in one level or another, we've talked about most of this. And some, again, some are more time sensitive than others, but we'll start with Project Lead the Way. Of these programs, it's kind of been in the hopper for several years already and we're just talking about moving on. So Al and Crystal and Michelle are going to be sharing the information regarding most of these, and I'll turn it over to Al to take off with Project Lead the Way.
Well, Project Lead the Way is probably one you're fairly familiar with. This is our STEM approach, science, technology, engineering, and math. It is fairly developed in our school district and it has been accessed by a lot of students. What we're trying to do is further develop it and open it up to more students. So we're going to show you two different approaches. We're going to show you the approach at the secondary level and at the elementary level. And these are our plans. If you have any questions or desire additional feedback, we are not going to go through all of the Project Lead the Way documents that we provided you. A lot of those are very detailed course descriptions that if you'd like to go back and look at further or have questions about, we'd certainly be able to answer them. But I'm going to start with Dr. Hoffman at the elementary level and talk about, we are just in the beginning of our elementary expansion, but we would really like to continue that and are excited about it.
In fact, as you may recall, we started with one module with our fifth grade science teachers this year, and it just finished in the last couple of weeks. It was a very exciting experience for our students in particular, but our teachers really enjoyed it as well. That one was involving a unit called infection detection where kids in the class got sick, I mean, in the scenario around you.
They were not really sick.
They were not really sick. Not from the science experiment at least.
Right.
But they had to figure out what was the illness, who was patient zero, and how the path of the illness had spread. And so it was just a really neat way in which kids had to kind of deduce and inquire and come up with that design thinking approach, dissolving problems. And it was very, very engaging is what the feedback was. So our DLTs were wonderful partners with our fifth grade science teachers. And so what we're looking at here, as we look forward to the future in year two possibly, our suggestion would be since kindergarten and first grade teachers will have a year under their belt with math, our new math program, be a great couple of grade levels to onboard. We can really focus that training and start with phase two. So that would include a couple of our kindergarten units. It would be pushes and pulls and then animals and algorithms. And then in first grade, it would be one involving light and exploring the sun and the moon and the stars, and then animal adaptations. That one is basically, they explore different ways in which animals have had to adapt over, you know, time. And then they design shoes that would protect them and the environment in the desert, based on what they know about adaptations and how they protect and serve certain functions. So pretty engaging. And then in fifth grade, we would suggest that we would begin infection detections companion module, which would be a computer science module, where they would design simulations of such things on their own and in groups and such. So it follows what you'll notice in those kindergarten, first grade, and then the second, fifth grade module is, we worked with our innovation committee and our fifth grade science teachers and DLTs and looked at curriculum alignment and also making sure, knowing that the tracks as they move into middle and high school, cover three areas, the engineering, the biomed, and the computer science. We really wanted to make sure we gave kids experiences in these suggestions from all three of those tracks as they went from K into fifth grade, as we build up what might become our elementary approach. And then in year three, we would onboard second, third, and fourth grade with two modules each as well. Again, similarly sampling from each of those three tracks over the span of time, kindergarten through fifth grade.
Are there more than two modules?
There are. There are a total of four modules for every grade level. What we tried to do was find the ones that based on the feedback and our own local curriculum really best met our needs while still honoring those three tracks to provide those bridging experiences leading up into secondary. So this gives us that flexibility to choose two that are really well supported in that inquiry in these three tracks, but then also the flexibility to tackle some of our additional objectives locally that might not be as well covered by these launch modules.
It's been an exciting opportunity. Just what we've seen with fifth grade and what we've seen, it just opened the doors for our teachers, a different way of approaching learning and our students in the engagement level. We are very excited to see this continue to grow in our elementary level. And I think Dr. Hoffman put it well, the tie into secondary and what Dr. Barr is going to talk about is very strong. And these are career pathways that are only growing and expanding for our students. So we want to begin early preparing our kids and giving them experiences in these areas. I think we could probably go to the secondary and just tie right in.
One quick question, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We're not overwhelming our teachers with having math this year starting and then adding this next year, correct?
I think that's the part of the strategy in selecting kindergarten and first grade is that if we were to onboard second, third, and fourth next year, knowing that that's also when we're onboarding our math training because we did it in phases so that we could focus that training and really provide that support for our teachers, we feel like this will be a natural kind of next step to onboard in part the launch program.
We did think about that, absolutely.
Now, who's doing the training?
That, great question. So at elementary, the training approach looks a little different than the requirements of secondary. So we have two individuals who are trained, and one of which, as a lead teacher, which means we can train the trainer. So the idea in this proposal would be we would actually expand that slightly to include a few more individuals over the next two years, but those folks then we can train our teachers in-house. There is a requirement from Project Lead the Way, it's a very set training, it's very systematic, and it's very involved and very comprehensive. And so it's a nice start for our teachers, they have that solid foundation, but we can do all of that in-house. We are hoping to be able to do that like we did this year on our built-in professional development days with in-house trainers.
So you're looking a couple of years down the road, or a year down the road, in hiring a couple more that would just focus?
No, right now, we have one of our DLTs and myself who are trained as lead teachers. And then in this, we would use a model similar to our math model, which is to have one teacher at the grade levels that are using the modules to be trained as a lead, and then those individuals can train the rest of our teachers. So it's just existing staff.
Yeah.
Who are living it and kind of know the tips and tricks in addition to having the actual training themselves as a lead teacher. So we think it'll be very relevant.
Our DLTs are essentially our tech teaching specialists. So we already have people that really fit this well and are able to get that specialized training from Project Lead the Way and then come back and train our teachers. They are already in our buildings, working with our teachers on tech integration, and this has been a really natural, they've trained on Project Lead the Way, and now they can easily give that to our staff on professional development days.
And just to clarify, so in this particular Project Lead the Way expansion at the elementary level, we're not necessarily talking about additional staff.
Right.
Additional PD time and trainings and things like that.
Supplies.
Mostly working with our own staff on that one.
And I guess what Dr. Volker just said, this would be on the professional development days, it wouldn't be above and beyond?
That's our hope.
It's our hope. There are times that sometimes it works out on the calendar, snow days, for example, that we might be able to move some professional development days to the end of the calendar and then we have those. If that doesn't work out, sometimes we ask staff, of course, with compensation, to come in at the end of the summer and do an extra day, and we do compensate them for that. But we hope to be able to accomplish this within our professional development days.
And for those that don't know, DLT is the district leadership team, is what, who that is.
Digital learning teacher.
Oh, digital learning teacher, sorry.
Elementary school.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem. Dr. Barr.
Okay, moving on to the high school, we'll be looking at the RPHSPLTW programming. There you go. So just a little bit of history, we started this journey a couple of years ago in the engineering pathway. In 2016, we introduced Introduction to Engineering Design, we call it IED, and then the following year, Principles of Engineering. And these are both foundational courses for the engineering pathway. So it gives the students kind of that foundational knowledge and experience that they need and also gets them into learning how to do that engineering design. And so being able to, like, if you walked in on a certain day, they might have a bag of stuff that they're supposed to design a catapult and they've got 30 minutes and go. And there's no, it's just all about, okay, let's brainstorm, let's create. So it's very exciting and it kind of gets them into that mindset. This year, we introduced computer integrated manufacturing, which is more of our training for kids who want to go into an advanced manufacturing career. And so that's a third year course. And then next year, we are proposing to do engineering design and development. And this one's a very exciting course because students actually get to think of a problem that they want to solve, research it, create a prototype, test it, work with some experts in the field, and sometimes kids do end up getting patents out of this. So one project that I saw one time was a student decided that he was tired of getting his car rained in when he forgets to put the windows up because he didn't look at the weather. So he designed a corridor where the windows would sense the rain and move up. Another student I've seen also designed a self-cleaning kitchen sink. So it's just a problem that they want to solve. And so that's pretty exciting courses that we're looking at. That's considered a capstone course, so that would be something a senior would take. In our biomedical pathway, we introduced last year, Principles of Biomedical Science. This course is where, one of the very first days of the year, there's a mannequin on the floor, she's dead, I mean, anyway, she's been, you know, she's died, and so they spend the whole year trying to figure out what exactly killed her because she's got a lot of different things going on. She has diabetes, sickle cell, all these different things. And so as they're learning about all of those things, they are trying to solve the mystery of what really did her in. And so, and the interesting thing about it is they don't have one solid answer. What can the kids defend based on the evidence that's there and what they've learned? So they really do like that course. The next course after that that we introduced this year was human body systems. And so human body systems is more like anatomy, so they study all the different body systems. They actually spend time building skeletal mannequins over the course of the year. So it starts off with the bone, but then they put on the clay for the muscles and they're learning about the nervous system. And so they literally build human beings, fake human beings, throughout the course of the year. And so it kind of gives them a little more in-depth knowledge of anatomy. What we are proposing for next year is medical interventions. And medical interventions focuses more on how to fight infections, how to screen what's in your genes, how to conquer cancer, and just what happens when your organs fail. So it's more into that, if you're looking for kids who are interested in becoming doctors, nurses, emergency room technicians, things like that, that kind of look. And then what we are proposing for the following year is biomedical innovations. Biomedical innovations is more for the student who is looking at going into a research, so I want to be in a lab. And they actually work on developing a fake superbug and then trying to figure out how would you fight against that superbug as its resistance to different antibiotics. So those two, MI and BI, are considered capstone courses because it's very different kids who would go into either one of those. Our computer science pathway is new. This year, we started by offering computer science essentials, and that is considered the foundational course for the future computer science courses. Next year, we are proposing cybersecurity, and it is exactly what it sounds like. It would be training kids in how to conduct cybersecurity, which is a very big need, high growing industry there. So the teacher is very excited about that. She's went and seen it at another school in Aletha and came back and just couldn't be more thrilled about that course that she's going to be offering, should you approve it. And then in the following two years, we'd like to offer computer science principles and computer science A, these two work together. And the benefit of this is at the end of computer science A, students can also take the AP Computer Science Assessment.
Yes, yes.
And earn AP credit as well. So Project Lead the Way has worked with AP to completely align those courses. And that is really more for your kids who are interested in programming, app development, things of that nature.
These are certainly upper level courses at this point in time. When you get to those capstone computer sciences, you are very involved.
So is the theory of these that have like four classes, that they would be able to start at their freshman year and take one of these each year?
Yeah, so you could actually start a little later than that. So for instance, in computer science, you could get it done in three. Biomedical, because you wouldn't, most kids probably wouldn't take MI and BI.
Right.
In most cases, you could get it done in three years. So let's say you couldn't get there your freshman year, you could still pick it up your sophomore year. All of these courses, when we first start them up, we have the ability to apply for grants, career education grants from DESI, and those will pay between 50 to 75% of the cost, just depending on the cost of each item. So that's really helpful and that definitely is a good kickoff, since there is quite a bit of equipment that comes in here. The training does look a little different at the secondary level. Project Lead the Way does require that teachers attend training. They are typically two-week trainings where they go to a site. So for instance, biomedical has had a training at KU Med Center. The computer science teacher who we sent last summer, she was at Cerner. So they try to do it onsite, but it is two solid weeks where they actually get to experience the curriculum. They are there from sunup to sundown, they have homework, it's a very rigorous process, but it really lets them know how to dig deep into the curriculum. And so we do send them, most, we're getting luckier in that Project Lead the Way really likes Kansas City. And so, for instance, the Cerner one was here, the KU Med is here, and so we are really lucky in that a lot of the trainings are going to start being offered locally so we don't have to have people to Rolla or Iowa or some other places like that. Any questions on high school? Middle school is complete. We have middle school courses and Project Lead the Way that lead to every one of these pathways, so we don't need to expand middle school at this time.
Are these full-year classes or are they just semester classes?
Full year.
They're all full year.
So if a student was able to start their freshman year, what would we, or do they lose like their senior year of not doing anything then until they?
They might not do something their senior year, or they might, you could have a kid who, you know, did computer integrated manufacturing their junior year, said, eh, you know, maybe I want something maybe a little more, you know, free, the research on, it might hit down to engineering, design, and development. And same thing with the biomed, let's say they did do medical interventions and said, no way, that's too hands-on, I want to maybe do the research. So they still have some flexibility.
And it could be that they tie into some tech program.
Right.
Where they might transition even to another level there or a different type of course. And then the other, you know, she mentioned about the training and the fact that there are DESI grants, and so Crystal's done a good job each year of putting together the grant applications, and we've consistently gotten those approved to help offset the implementation costs there because they're a little pricey to start. From a staffing perspective, I don't know if Dr. Volker was going to cover it already, but as I understand it from the computer science path, we've probably got staffing capacity for a while. With the engineering and the biomedical, that could lead to, based on course requests, potentially more staffing. Dr. Volker and I have talked about it, probably likely that we would need one science-related position at the high school based on what we would anticipate enrollment request to be like, so.
Yep, that's correct. Then we are looking at, in the future, we would not be surprised at all if looking at enrollment, that we'll need a science teacher or someone with expertise and training in this area so we can. And then we cannot predict the future, but these programs are fairly popular with our students. So that would even, that would even continue the following year, that we could need an additional staff member, that would not completely surprise me. These are very well thought out, very well designed, very well implemented courses. And I think in general, they are very good for our students to experience. So as they grow and progress, we hope to support them in whatever way necessary so that our students are able to access them if they so choose.
How many students are we talking about that would be involved in these programs?
Yep.
So if we just looked comparatively, last year in engineering, we had 55, and in biomedical, we had 84. This year, we have 172 in the biomedical pathway, 60 in the engineering pathway, and then we added computer science, we have 23 in there. So biomedical in particular tends to grow very quickly, and so that is why we're thinking a science teacher, if not maybe for Project Lead the Way, maybe because one of our current teachers is going to do more Project Lead the Way, and so then they're leaving a gap in science.
But I would tell you, I really do believe this is something that, you know, and we've just talked science now, but I do think that we'll have to monitor all the three of these areas. These are high-needs areas for our community, they are high job occupation areas, and if we have to look for additional staff to support these programs for students, I think that's something that we'll definitely do.
And do these fall in line with their graduation requirements? They're not going to have to take two science classes one year because they need a science credit?
These are all under electives, but kids need quite a few electives.
Oh, okay.
So it fills right in. And then just to feed off of the course information, it's probably good to note that, like, the engineering curriculum was written with Rolla in coordination with industry. The biomedical curriculum was written with KU and medical industry. So they always are trying to write their curriculum that involves higher ed, but then also involves industry, so they know that it is accurate, and then they update it as needed. So as things change, they update. Computer science is on its second version now because that obviously changes really quickly. So they're very good at keeping that up to date. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to elementary modern language.
Well, we had a lot of conversation, and once again, as Dr. Monses pointed out, in the strategic plan process and looking at expanding real-world opportunities, expand STEAM co-curricular opportunities through all grade levels, one of the things that was mentioned and listed was world languages. So with that, we decided it would be important to offer a couple of options to talk about, look at, get some feedback tonight, as well as kind of a reminder, there was another objective in there and a lot of discussion regarding extended collaboration time for teachers. We've talked about that as we've worked through at the high school level with our late starts and our middle school level with our additional planned times. It's very difficult, the elementary level, to do and still provide a very family-friendly oriented schedule for our little ones and those staff and families. So what we've tried to do is take that approach and combine them and give two options. In this, we have an option that provides a modern language approach, and you'll see it would involve hiring three and a half modern language teachers to split between the elementary schools. That would allow us to approach this in grades two through five and with having a modern language class and we call it foreign language.
And why do we call it modern language as opposed to archaic language?
Do you want to go ahead?
Not Latin because it's not spoken anymore.
Yes, we can call it foreign language, I'm totally fine if you would like to call it foreign language.
I mean, I think it's confusing, I mean, what's modern language mean?
Dr. Monses and I were having this conversation about an hour and a half ago.
I don't know what that means.
It means foreign language, so.
Then why don't we just say foreign language?
I have no problem with writing foreign language on everything else.
Thank you.
Yes, I promise. So we will now call it foreign language because I'm much more comfortable with that as well. Oh, it does, it does. When we're looking at it with grades two through five, it would be a part of their, what we consider their electives, and they would have that every fourth day for 35 minutes. In that, there is a considerable cost when you're talking about three and a half staff members, so that's listed as well. They would, and it would require our digital learning teachers and our library media specialist to be a part of that fourth kind of elective, so.
What's the fourth day now?
There are three days now.
Didn't used to be four?
It used to be four. A long time ago, we had the computer teacher.
And then we made the computer drop to three.
Yes, yeah, we dropped, yeah, we took computer out and made them digital learning teachers because there was so much tech integration.
So it'd be going back to four.
And coaching, so this would go back to a four electives rotation. So it would be shared, most of it would be the modern language, but then the digital learning teacher and the library media specialist would take a small component of that fourth day or a smaller, so that way we could share teachers between, one teacher between two buildings. That's the way you'd have to do that. If not, if you made that fourth, you obviously would have to have seven teachers, one per elementary school, not to include that digital learning teacher and library media specialist. We still think that is a responsible way to do that and at least introduce modern lang, foreign language into the elementary level. And it would also extend the core teacher collaboration time by 15 minutes a day. So when you're talking about that, that is, 15 minutes a day doesn't seem like much, but when you're looking over the years, I think it's like 43 hours of additional collaboration time.
I'm sorry, where's the 15 minutes come from?
You would then block the time, essentially you could do an A and a B, so you'd do two electives on one day. Am I correct, Dr. Hoffman? Two electives on one day, and that way would be 70 minutes, the electives would be 35 minutes long. So from the child's experience, they might go to art and music on Monday, and then on Tuesday, they'd go to modern language and.
PE.
PE.
And what do they do now?
They, every day, they do one for 52 minutes, 55 minutes?
55.
55 minutes. So in turn, it would, it reduces the amount of elective time by, I think, four minutes a week. And you might, you'd have four minutes less of art.
So you're adding a day that we didn't used to have?
You're.
I mean, what, I guess what I'm asking is, what, don't you have to take something out to do this?
Comes out of core instruction time.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm asking, what would they come out of?
You're adding fifteen minutes, yeah. You, that additional time would come out of, the elementary day is very, is different than when you think of rotating through, so they'll have a chunk of literacy time, that might be an hour and a half, they might have six minutes of math.
So I'm not necessarily saying that's bad, but.
Yes.
Do you all have a plan for how you're going to get everything else done and lose fifteen minutes?
It is going to be tight.
I mean, is that a concern?
Yes, it's a concern. It is, it is a concern. It is going to be tight. I mean, I think it is something we have to think about. Dr. Hoffman and I have been talking about where exactly would that time come. There are, there is some time in the day that I feel could be allocated, or, or maybe streamlined, or maybe expedited. That's very difficult. It's very, very difficult with K-one and two, especially. You'll notice this plan is two, three, four, and five. They are a little more able to ready their day more quickly, to, to have, you know, maybe a little bit less, what we might traditionally call home room time, or advisory time.
Does this go back to how it was six years ago, or whenever that was? And are you going back to how it was, or you're doing it differently?
It, I would describe it as different.
It would be different. Are you referring to when the DLT was in rotation, so specials were every fourth day?
Yeah.
Okay, so this would be, it's not the same, but I, I think it's helpful to think of it like it intermediate, when we used to have an A and a B day. And so they would go to two forty-ish minute encore classes, basically, and then that would be the teacher's planning time, while the students heard those two classes.
A little more similar to that Bridleridge Eagle Glen model. Than it wa-, than it is that when our kids, you know, were in kindergarten.
So when we went from four to three, did we gain core time?
No, so the, the rotation, whether it's three day or four day of specials at elementary, were always fifty or fifty-five minutes. Like, right now, we have fifty minutes for K-one and fifty-five for second through fifth grade, kindergarten and first grade have a little longer recess. That hasn't changed whether they were in a three day or four day rotation.
I guess what I'm saying is, why don't we just go back to how it used to be when it was four, and wouldn't we not lose fifteen minutes of core education if we went back to how it was when they had four?
We wouldn't be able to gain the teacher planning collaboration time. We're making this conscious trade of fifteen minutes of collaboration time.
So I just wanted to get at that. Okay, so what we, the reason we're trading it off is not to get the foreign language, it's to get the collaboration time.
Correct.
So they're two different decisions, really?
Yes, yes.
Yes, exactly. And he's going to get to that, so.
Well, it, it is, because you can, option two, when you look at, you can just add the additional planned time. And you could do that and say, okay, if we, for example, we're not necessarily here, we want to transition, we want to introduce modern, foreign language right at this time, but we can reach objective two by extending our collaboration time. So we can do that by technology, the library and the counseling lessons being strategically scheduled together, trying, chunking that time. The change would be, the digital learning teacher, okay, would be included with the librarian and the counselor, three tenths of the week into that elective rotation, the specials rotation is what it's called. So you chunk those together, they would then take a core component, three tenths of their week be, would be, kids would be coming into their room to do lessons, and not them always pushing in to the other classrooms. And then you could chunk that time and then add, you'd have seventy to ninety minutes of core time every other week. So, I know, it's a little complicated.
And what grade levels are we talking about again on this?
On the second option, with the TLC, all grade levels would have, have that.
K-five.
And this is actually.
When you say all, you don't mean all, you mean K-five?
I do mean K-five, so sorry.
When, when Dr. Hoffman says all, she's talking K-five.
And option one is grades two through five?
I think there's some accommodations for K-one, two, but it's not.
You see the bottom two bullets of option one, we found a way, just by recess covers, and they have an additional recess at kindergarten and one, to, to give them some additional collaboration time as well, because we wanted to be equal as possible.
So another wrench in this stuff, we've talked about the counselor's curriculum and getting more of that type of stuff. Is that just another thing that's going to take core time away?
What the good thing about that is, if we add counselors into a, a kind of a scheduled rotation, there are, there are a lot of curriculum that are already responsible for teaching the kids. Instead of pushing into the class, they can actually complete all the curriculum within their lesson.
So this, this TLC model, if I can connect to what Dr. Volker's saying, is actually something our buildings are using at least once a quarter now, but it, it's, they have to kind of redo their schedule to provide this once a quarter dose. But we do have one building who has been doing that as their model, because it just really connects strategically when the counselor's time is up against the time when the librarian would have their lesson up against, and they connect it to the specials block. So teachers get this expanded collaboration chunk of time. So it's either happening everywhere once a quarter currently, or in one building, they are doing this as their model. It's just restructuring that time that's already allocated, not additional time out of the core instructional minutes.
Let me qualify this just a little bit. There is some tweaking that happens within schedules every year, based on how many sections you have in each building and how that flows with all the specials teachers. So we're kind of comparing it to what we're doing this year, but each year, it's maybe a little bit different.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And so forth, moving on. So you're correct that we're really talking about two decisions. One, we want to expand that collaboration time. We can figure out ways to creatively do that without having the foreign language piece. But if we make the decision to add the foreign language piece, we can kill two birds with one stone. So that's why we're kind of pairing these together as options, even though they don't have to be considered as one.
Have we gotten any teacher?
I don't understand how that's solving two things at the same time.
Because.
Because you're adding, you're taking away the, okay, all right, never mind.
Have we gotten any teacher input on this, of what their thoughts are?
And the whole A and B, and that's on that, the A and B block thing, the block A and B, are they doing that now in K-five?
They are not. They, it's very similar to the intermediate model, what that looks like.
And my question would be, is that good for kids? I, I, I get con-, I don't know, is it? I'm asking.
Well, that, it depends. I mean, think about that.
And teachers, so kids and teachers.
Think about that as currently, if we have a first grade class that goes into music for fifty minutes, and I don't know if you're first graders, just imagine that age group, you have to build many engaging components to keep a first grader involved in any activity for fifty minutes, so.
And block shortens that?
Yes, you'd go thirty-five minutes of that, and then thirty-five minutes of the other. So I think there could be some advantage to it as well.
Okay, but I misunderstood, and the, when we just switched to the longer classes at the high school, where we have, how long are they now?
Oh, yeah.
Every other day, is that sixty, eighty, eighty minutes?
Three days are traditional, so they're more forty-five minutes, and then the two block days, the courses are about ninety minutes.
So you call those block as well, it just means something different?
Yes.
Okay. Because my question would be unrelated, how, I don't want the answer now. How is that going, and do we think that's been good for kids? So we're getting ready to talk about some other block stuff, but I'd kind of like to know how that went first, but I thought you meant we were adding longer.
No, we would actually be shortening those elective blocks. And I think at that age group.
That sounds better.
That might be.
Shorter, more often.
Yes, shorter, more often.
And then to Ruth's point.
Yeah.
Getting the same instructions, just in a condensed time each day.
And to clarify or reiterate what Dr. Volker had said, K and one would not necessarily be included in that modern language model as proposed. It would be second, third, fourth, and fifth grades. K and one would actually have a forty-five minute planned time, which, or a specials rotation, which is slightly shorter as well at that age group, and then that would be offset, as Dr. Volker mentioned, about the recess coverage by the specials teachers on, on a rotation basis.
And I jumped in on Ruth's question, but teacher input on this?
Well, I just had a conversation with the digital learning teachers. I think there is, with any change, sometimes there's a little trepidation. I, I think after talking with them regarding how much they're already trying to accomplish, either by pushing in, or kids coming to the room, I think they, I, I don't want to speak for them, I, I think.
I think the feedback we have right now is the informal feedback about how much they value the time they need to do more collaboration and planning and preparation and things of that sort. And that's the feedback we've heard, is we need more time, and, and we know we're not as comparable to the secondary schools.
Right, right.
And so that's, it's partially about equity.
So it really does come back to, is this an approach we want to take, just looking at extending collaboration time? Is it, do we want to extend collaboration time and do explore foreign language as an offering at Ray Peck? We have options here, so.
Did you look at how other schools are getting foreign language in in the younger grades there?
We, we have looked at, and we had some conversations with, I think it was Blue Valley, and I know they.
In more of a club-like setting.
Yeah, it, it, I have to be honest, it's pretty rare.
Yes.
That foreign language is an elementary offering. It, it's probably more, we're going to talk about strings, there's probably more elementaries that have strings offerings at the elementary level than foreign language. I could tell you as, in my personal preference, that with the research and brain development, that foreign language would be, I think, a valuable, a very valuable elementary offering. It is not a core fundamental component of elementary instruction. You could tell us and say, hey, you know, we'd like you to explore this further, and we could. That is totally, we are willing to do whatever is necessary.
Is the data there to support our students, more of our students have a, a bigger foundation of a foreign language when they graduate?
I, I think we would have to continue to research it, truly.
I think we would too.
Well, and what would, what would the foreign language be, just Spanish or Spanish and French?
We've talked about a couple different options. We've talked about, you know, doing a semester model, semester of Spanish, semester of French, we've talked about doing an intro, but I, I wouldn't like to expand it too far. That's not enough time to do multiple. But Spanish makes the most sense in, just as our.
I would think it would just be a good stepping stone when they do go, move on to middle school.
I think it could be very positive.
Especially if every year, they're getting the basics, you know, the letters, the numbers, the, just the basics of how to say, I am my name, I, how are, you know, how are you, just kind of those everyday conversations you have with people. Because I took Spanish for a semester in college, and I don't remember hardly any of it, but when I hear something, and we flew pretty quick, so I think laying that basic foundation of just, I mean, they're learning English along with Spanish, so they could just, and they're sponges. Kids at that age, especially kindergarten, first grade, they soak up everything. So I think it would be a good foundation to lay, if they do want to pursue it in middle school, they would already have the basics, and they could just hit the ground running, and then in high school.
Billy, did you have any comments? I know it's hard to catch in there when you're sitting there listening.
Fell asleep.
Well, I did like whenever, I think that was Ruth talking, I liked when Ruth and Paul and myself went over to some of the grade schools, especially Creekmore, where Jared Philhauer was, he did the characteristic, characteristic trait assembly, and that would kind of offset and give some, some time, so. I know the teachers, they, they really loved the time. I mean, whether you did that, or did a foreign language, or, you know, subsidized it with something else, the teachers really loved the time.
I guess what I don't understand is, why can't you do option two, I guess I don't understand why we have to lose the fifteen minutes. You have option two to extend the, is there not a way to do it? I'm, I'm having trouble with the math.
Option two loses fifteen minutes as well.
Oh, they both lose fifteen minutes?
They both lose fifteen minutes of core instruction time.
So I thought, okay, all right.
Roughly, I mean, it's, it's close to the same, just organized a little differently.
Well, and I guess if you all have a plan for that, I, I like the idea of the foreign language, I think it's valuable, as long as you all have a plan, and it doesn't, I just feel like we keep stressing out our teachers and staff, and, so yeah, it's great to have foreign language, but what are, what are we doing to our staff?
Right.
When we do that?
And I think we can get more data. I mean, I think we can, we can ask more, we can research more, we can get more input, we can go out with ideas, and we can come back with what we gathered. I don't think we have to, I mean, this is why we're presenting and getting that feedback, so if you say.
The reality just hit me, oh, yeah, you have to give up something to do that.
You do, you do.
Oh, darn.
So we can go get, we can go gather more information, we can get more feedback, we can come back to you. We'll do that fairly quickly, being that we don't have a lot.
Yeah, I would really like to get more feedback from our teachers and see what they think.
I have no problem doing that.
Absolutely, we'll work on that.
I, I will predict that anything that gets them the extra fifteen minutes a day will be wildly popular. I'll just, I'll just share with you, when we first broached this subject with our elementary principals back in the spring, as just a hypothetical, they were overwhelmingly supportive and have been thinking about this and talking about this for some time as a, a next step for their schools. And so I think there's, there's going to be enough research to support the overall brain development that comes with studying foreign language at a young age. So I, I don't think we're going to have any trouble finding the support and finding other districts that have been doing this. I, I had one conversation with the Liberty Superintendent, because they do this at the elementary level, and they're sold on it, so.
All right.
I think there's, I think there's plenty of support out there, but we, we're glad to pull some more of that together.
We can move quickly, we'll try.
But it just kind of supports how we're bringing in the Spanish and stuff more early into the middle school level, in order for IB to be productive more.
Yep, and just preparation. There, there's a lot of good research out there, but we can pull some together.
Well, and I went to, in one of the conferences.
And look at some other models, too.
I was at, it not, it helps our students, but those students that maybe English is their second language, this makes them feel more confident, more empowered, because they know it, and they're then able to help their fellow students, and they're not the second person, like they are sometimes.
Another thing that I think, and I don't know how you would quantify this, but as we know, time is a resource, and we have been adding collaboration time. Is there a way to assess the value and benefit of that, and that it has yielded results and been beneficial? And I, I know the answer's yes, but how much, you know, do we keep adding more time? I mean, when, when do we stop adding collaboration time? Is, you know, and where is that magic point that?
I think we're maxed out at the secondary level, just so. I think, I just don't see I can pull any more from anywhere else. So it's our elementary level that we haven't been able to kind of reach that, and if you ask our staff, they are great gauge, but if you ask our elementary staff, they will honestly answer. They are not at the point at the secondary level. But it's a great question. I often go back to overall achievement, but then our staff satisfaction and their ability to get their job done. That when our staff feels like they have the time, and they have the ability, and they're using that high school collaboration and that middle school collaboration, and they're using it the way, but I think if we asked our elementary staff that same question, we'd get a very different answer.
And do we ask that question on our survey?
It's a workplace satisfaction. Yes, I believe we do. Carmen, do we ask the collaboration?
Do we have enough collaboration time?
Question on PDC? Now, we can, we can ask it.
That would be good.
And I know talking with elementary teachers, that's always a big concern. I feel like we've done so much for the other levels of giving them collaboration time, and they haven't gotten it.
I hear the same thing, pretty much can, over and over and over. So, okay, we'll go back and do some more work on that.
All right, well, thanks for all your work on that.
Oh, no problem.
All right, next on the agenda, strings and orchestra.
Okay, so again, you'll see it listed as a part of the strategic plan, in the same action step was to expand those STEAM co-curricular opportunities, and one of them listed was orchestra and strings. So we've been talking about that for quite a while. Here is a draft plan of, again, to implement orchestra strings, looking at hiring one full-time equivalent teacher for that. Truly and honestly, and it lists middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade orchestra courses and a high school intro, with one staff member, and with the way our schedules are developed between our middle schools and high schools, already having two middle schools, and on a very different schedule than a high school. One FTE would be able to fulfill that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we believe, and we even have to do some schedule adjustments, and possibly look at maybe some other elective areas, staffing, to make that happen. Building in the high school orchestra course to start with one FTE would be difficult. I would work very hard with the high school to try and, and, and make it work within their schedule. There are some blocks that allow for shared and collaboration teaching.[1693.02] First block, for example, that we might be able to share a staff member and get them over to do a section of orchestra at the high school. But I have to tell you, it would be, it would be difficult. It would be a lot. Um, but it is possible. We believe it is possible. But it would take some reorganization, it'd take some restructuring, um, and I put an asterisk under there. Even that plan could require additional staff in other middle school elective areas and a slight of schedule adjustment to accomplish it. Uh, we have two middle schools. They're quite a ways apart. Even if you do them on one day, um, or you do morning and afternoon. We have sixth grade electives that are spread throughout the day, just based on how their schedule and sixth grade schedules work. So trying to get them, an elective of, uh, strings orchestra would be very difficult with a shared teacher. We think we can accomplish that, but it's going to take quite a bit of work. Um, so that's the idea that their estimated cost, uh, fairly substantial, uh, but doable in that, and I just wanted to present that as well.
Couple of questions. Um, could we start it at the middle school the first year before we even add a high school level to see what the interest level is? And B, could we, would the cost difference be effective to look at renting those pieces? So that we have like a warranty to it? So if it breaks, we can-
The, uh, yeah, great questions. Two questions. First, yes, uh, we could look at the middle school level first. We can maybe even put it in the high school course catalog or just ask high school students, would you be interested? And we might find, you know, we have a very small number. We'd like to start foundationally our program in the middle school alone. So yes, we could do that. The second thing on the rental equipment, there are certain pieces that don't travel well. Bass, cello, you, we could look at renting those, but we are going to need those for a number of years. And if you take care of those instruments, they're going to last a number, it would probably be more cost effective just to purchase them. Those are the ones that would stay here. Now, the students who played a cello, you would rent yours and leave it at home. So you could practice. So your rental cello, and you probably would rent it, especially when you're starting. You don't want to purchase that and then have to try and sell that on the market afterwards. Like strings isn't for me. I've got to sell a cello. So you want to rent that to start. You'll play that at home as your practice instrument. And then we'll have an instrument for them at school that we've purchased. Things like violins, violas, they're going to travel. And that child will just rent that. I've looked at rental costs, they're reasonable. I mean, my son played the French horn to start and I know exactly what I paid to rent that and it was fairly pricey. Um, these instruments are even less than that relative. Uh, cellos and things and basses are going to be more expensive to rent. They're a little more specialized, much larger, kind of like, you know, tuba.
So just a quick question, and, um, my kids haven't been in band, so I don't know the answer to this. Um, students rent those instruments? We don't provide those instruments? Except for maybe, I don't know, do we provide a tuba?
Yes, yes, there's certain instruments, it's similar, it's similar. For certain instruments we provide.
And our rental price is kind of the same to rent a trumpet versus renting a violin?
Uh, yeah, actually, in, in some capacities. It changes per instrument and it will change the same way in orchestra. I mean, that's why I think-
I guess I was just wondering if we're upping the rent when you start talking orchestra?
It didn't look like it. It, it didn't look like it.
I mean, just kind of from an equity-
And it really is, it really is so instrument dependent. I mean, I, I was in the band and paying quite a bit, a decent amount a month to have a, a French horn. Now, if he would, Luke would have stayed in longer, we would have purchased one. But I wasn't going to purchase till I knew that was really what he wanted to do.
I had one in our strings program and we actually found one on Craigslist or something for them to try with. And we had said, you know, if you continue it, we'll look at something then.
Yeah, we'll look at purchasing or looking at renting.
And I know she was in it when it was dropped because the levels were low for participation.
Yep. And it's, go ahead.
Well, I would just say that I think the focus is clearly at the middle school level. What I would suggest is if we're going to move forward with this, there is, and Crystal, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any, uh, concern with putting it in the course catalog as a consideration. We have lots of courses in our high school course catalog that don't make from a year to year. And that might be a good way to test it, to see if we even have enough. And if we do have enough, or maybe just one section. Um, if we can't make it work with the one FTE, that's where we can get a part-time person or retiree or somebody to maybe come offer that one section.
Right, just to do the one section of the high school. That would be probably truly more feasible than trying to get this one FTE to make the schedule work. I mean, we could probably do that, but first block might be it and it would already be difficult. But if we had a high school section make to find someone who had taught this and retired and will come back to do that, um, is feasible.
Billy, any feedback?
Wake him up.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to unmute my phone.
All right. So moving on to mental health supports.
Okay, so with mental health supports, uh, first is a quick update, honestly. Um, we have the mental health task force that will meet at the end of the month and they're still working on their homework. Relative to the MOU with our, our possible partnership with Compass, um, mental health, the behavioral health. So, uh, we've gotten a lot of great feedback, um, from Compass regarding their ability to work with us. So we can tailor the selection process of the mental health, uh, professionals. So we can be very involved in their ongoing work with our students. And those are the things that you as a board listed as, hey, these are concerns of ours, or not even concerns. These are expectations of ours when anyone partners that closely and works with our students, which I greatly appreciate. And so I was just pleased Compass Mental Health has been very much willing to partner with us on those. So our mental health task force has the draft MOU in their hands right now and is coming over that. And when we meet again at the end of this month, we'll put that together, then be able to show that to our attorneys. Make sure our attorneys are comfortable with that. So we could bring it back possibly in December to talk about a formal partnership and look-
Quick question, sorry. I remember when this was brought up several years ago when we first got on. Um, confidentiality was a big deal, you know, and making sure we address that with making sure our students' information is kept confidential.
Oh, yes. There are very stringent legal requirements regarding that, that even our own mental health professionals. We were just talking about having to purchase, uh, um, some additional software for just their material. So you have to take that very seriously. So we absolutely will do that. Well, just looking at general considerations, I wanted to just provide the highlights of what we've been talking about over time. I know for most of you, Bill, this is, um, there'd be some catching up to do. There's a lot of information, but I apologize. But we've been, sorry, I know it's a lot. We've been talking about this for some months now, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. The other is a position that we have, um, we're, we're not able to fill. And if you want to continue on to the school psychologist, um, that we were looking to fill, we, we weren't, um, 100% comfortable with our candidates, we, we weren't, uh, our timeline. And so we said, you know what? It, we had a position that was a behavior interventionist. That position and why, we had one of our behavior interventionists to go on and be our administrative interns. Applied to be that. We're very happy that she applied to be that at Bridle Ridge Intermediate School, or elementary intermediate was when I was there. I apologize. Bridlema- elementary school. So she's doing a great job there. Uh, but we kept that position because that was pretty late and we would, didn't want to hire that and not have a whole, um, the breadth of candidates that we would if we were hiring in the spring, for example.
Yeah, it was a, it was a June transition and so-
It was very late, yeah. You don't have the, the, the number of candidates that open for those positions that you would when you're hiring in January or February. That's the reason we come to you so early with these conversations. So that wasn't available. Well, in the discussion regarding that position, remember we currently have two. We have a behavior interventionist working in the secondary. We have a behavior interventionist working at the elementary. They partner closely with our mental health professionals that are working in secondary, mental health professionals working at the elementary. What the discussion has been, instead of hiring one more behavior interventionist, was to actually take that position and hire a school psychologist. Now, a school psychologist, I think in the most straightforward terms is the quarterback of your multi-tiered system of support related to mental health and behavior. They are trained specifically in assessments and structures, so they receive extensive training. They're, they're probably the next step up relative to the behavior interventionist position. So what we're asking is to really reallocate that job, um, to take one more step up in what you'd call the education and training. So when you're looking at a behavior interventionist, often they'll have a bachelor's degree. Um, they might have a teaching background with some specialist or master's level work in, in behavior. These often take the next step. So they'll have a specialist or doctorate in this specific field. Go ahead.
So when you say just, when you were looking at just purely psychologists, obviously that's a different level of care. Did, was there a look at like LCSW license, licensed clinical social workers, you know, people that have, they're in the family therapy field?
Yes, yes. And that's what we have too. So that's what our mental health professionals are LPCs. So they're licensed professional counselors. They're even one step above that LCSW. So we already have two that are employed with us and they are really going to be kind of that direct therapy. They do provide con- consult, um, consult, um, with, uh, teams of teachers and they liaise with outside mental health professionals. So we have that and we feel like we have a, a good handle on that. What we really need is someone to direct the entire pyramid from, and really support and build from directing and supporting our LPCs to working with our school-based counselors, to working with our behavior interventionists. And really focus and guide that entire three-tiered structure. From what are all our kids getting, what are our tier two supports and structures look like, that's what these people are specifically trained to do.
Who do the, um, what do, LPCs, is that what you said? Who do they currently report to? And then in this scenario, who would they report to?
They currently report to me. Um, that would probably be an evolution, meaning-
So would they report to this new position? Is that what you're saying?
They, they would probably work at, they, there is very likelihood that they would, yes. Um, that this would be the quarterback in that, I mean, that kind of at the top of that mental health pyramid to help us support. Now, I, I might say that in education and training, they could be on the same level as LPCs. So they could be working in tandem, but I really would want-
But they would be a group. They would be a cohesive unit.
Yes, yes, but they-
I, I like this idea. I think it's a good next step in our evolution. And I understand we have a lot of evolution and development to do. Um, so I'm going to continue to state for the record for the next three years as we evolve. Um, I really do think we need to look at our structure, our, what, all the duties we currently have on our counselors. And, um, seriously consider, and I'm going to use the word restructuring, but that doesn't mean get rid of people.
Okay.
It means add more people. Um, we, we need to better define roles and responsibilities and get them on the right people in the right places at the right time. And I think this is a good evolution to that and, but I think we still have three more years of work to go after this.
I think you're absolutely right. I think this is a step in that direction.
And I think it involves additional budget.
Yeah. And I've been working just to let the board know, and we talked about, a lot about, um, mental health policies and procedures. So I've been researching quite a bit, mental health policies that are usual, used in other states and other districts that might help us kind of set that path and define that pyramid. So I think it is an evolution, but that's absolutely what we're working towards. And this position, without a whole lot of budgetary, I mean, there is some budgetary addition, because they do have more training. They often have more education, so there would be an added expenditure when you're hiring someone of this level. Um, but it's not considerable over, we already have a position that we have not allocated. I mean, we have not. So we have a behavior interventionist that might be a master's level position. This might be just the next step in that.
So for those who say we're doing away with a behavioral interventionist, we can educate them on, no, we're not doing away with them. We're actually adding to them.
This is a, this is the step kind of right above that in, now, they can and will provide that direct consultation. They'll meet with teams, so, but they will do it part of, often as modeling, often as, um, working with and in tandem. This came from a lot of conversations in our department and, well, with, uh, and Marlena Wally apologizes. She, uh, wanted to be here. She's our director of special education. She was just about as sick and I thought, I'm like, you sound like you're on your deathbed. Could you please go home? She wanted to be here because this is really, she has seen this work specifically, um, and work well. And this position really be that leader of that multi-tiered system of support, of that pyramid of mental health.
Well, and this falls in line with our strategic planning as well.
Yes.
Did this go through the mental health task force at all to get their input?
I don't, I don't believe we had this listed as in a mental health task force topic. No. This came from, this was a lot of conversation with special education. If you want to really where this started, um, when they came and said, hey, we've seen, uh, the behavior interven- and interventions and what they do. And now our new LPCs and what they do. And what we really need is that coordinator, that, that quarterback. That really is doing what Kim has just stated, guiding the whole group and leading the structures, who does what and where and why.
And so, and that's what I want to clarify, because I could see the hiring of this position go two ways. Like hiring the detail person who's going to sit and do detail stuff like with kids all day long versus hiring an administrator. And it almost needs to be 50/50 probably. I just want to make sure that when we go to hire this person, that they're ha- at least half an administrator, right? Is that what you're saying? They'll, they'll be on an administrative level? Because otherwise they're going to keep reporting to you, right? And no, no offense.
Yes. Well, honestly, probably, as everyone in this department reports to me, eventually they would report to me.
But I mean, we need, I think we need that director of mental health or whatever the name is, right? And so I get it, you can't, we aren't in a position to have 100% administrator yet in that role.
Right.
So maybe it starts off 50/50, but the goal is to have an administrator in that role, right?
And it, it's so specialized that to find a school administrator, do it as a degree in what we in classically in education would call school administration. That is the expertise to do this is probably not going to happen.
Well, no.
They just have to have administrative mindset with some support and training.
No, and I, I don't even know that I would want that.
Right, right. I don't either.
I think they just need to have administrative experience and, and be able to be an administrator.
The great thing about this position is they're, a part of their training really is that leadership capacity. It, it really is.
Well, I would assume-
That's really why we would like to go that direction.
That sounds good.
I would assume that leadership, the administrative position, there's a lot of paperwork I'm sure that has to be followed through on a lot of this stuff. And making sure that we've crossed our, me and Donner's eyes.
Yeah.
Well, would special ed, would this just strictly be mental or would we help or would we put the?
They'd work with all students.
Well, I know. But they, the special ed wouldn't fall under this person. This would strictly just be all the mental health and behavior spec-
No, they would not fall under just special education in my position, in my, my terms.
I mean, they would work obviously together probably a lot.
They would work very closely. Oh yeah, they'd have to.
You know, I mean, there's other kids that, and the staff could benefit from having.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. So we just wanted to present that, that thought and idea. This would be something that we'd like to move forward fairly quickly with, um, and trying to find a high-quality candidate.
Oh, and that was my other question, with, on the first topic with the Compass. Um, are you looking at starting that if everything clicked along in January or next school year?
I, I think we, we have talked about that. It really couldn't, January would be very difficult, so almost impossible.
That's what I thought, but you had mentioned, you got it up to about December and then I didn't know what was next.
There is a possibility that we, that could begin, you know, as, as the third quarter ends, you know, in, in late February, early March. Uh, get our feet wet with that, start those, start building those relationships, get those therapists into our buildings. Um, a- and then kind of close out the year. And it could be where we find, you know, we, we're going to start with two and maybe even then see that we have a need to have four as we begin next school year. It, it could, it's going to be an evolution with that, that partnership, so.
Part of the timing piece of that is, once we decide we want to move forward the MOU and we approve that, now there's a time lag to get somebody identified, trained in place.
Yeah, the hiring.
Right now in that field, it takes some time. So it may take two or three months to even get one or two people identified in place, so.
The Compass-
It could be busy starting in January, but it, they may not actually be in the buildings until next year.
Later.
Yeah, yeah.
Did I read correctly that this would be like a nine-month person?
That, that is just a draft. I mean, honestly, Dr. Montzus and I even have just continued that dialogue. Whether it's a 10-month with, or teacher contract with plenty of extra days, is it look like an 11-month contract? What does it exactly look like? That is not, that document truly is a draft.
I guess what would be the difference if we had a school psychologist and we did the Compass partnership?
The Compass partnership is just that direct therapy. Uh, we would like this school psychologist to be a part of that kind of leadership continuum, even looking and overseeing that direct therapy. Um, now those therapists would still be employees of Compass Health, but we would still like and, and expect to keep some ability of oversight. If we are getting reports that the, this isn't working, um, we would want this school psychologist and our mental health professionals, as I already talked to you, to be, um, engaged in that process.
And just to be clear, the Compass agreement would just focus on certain kids who are Medicaid eligible on other ways.
Yeah, Medicaid eligible students.
While other capacity they may have, it, it, it may not be that that's the only students they serve, but that's going to be their primary focus.
Yes, yep.
Billy, did you have any feedback?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. And, and just one last thing on, I think we hit a lot of our, um, not concerns, but things that would be important to us in the MOU. But again, I'm not sure how we get to the, the concern of over-providing. You know, they are going to be billing an external source, Medicaid, right? And so obviously if they see a kid five times, they're going to get more money than if they see them two times. My concern, one of my concerns is how do we make sure that they're not seeing someone five times that they only need to see two times, right?
Yeah, that's great. And that's why-
So how do we, how do we oversee that?
Absolutely. And we have talked about that with them. And our, having our mental health professionals in the room.
Yeah, that's probably the answer.
Incredibly valuable. So thank you for not having me try and know that.
So they get, they get. So when somebody is seen, they get evaluated every, Medicare will give you five visits. At the end of that five visits, then they're reevaluated or the Medicare evaluates it. So it's not like they're just blanket, I'm going to give you this. Medicare controls that to a certain extent, but the two people we have hired, the positions we have now, plus the one we're talking about tonight, probably have greater expertise than the folks that would be providing that level of service.
Right, because the people submitting to Medicare, the people seeing the kids, so, I mean, without oversight theoretically, they could write what they wanted and keep getting the approvals. So having that oversight to review those reports that are being submitted to Medicare to make sure they, they appear accurate.
There are certain things that, just to be perfectly transparent, that we would not be able to view. There are certain things that are very much more kind of client therapist privileged, but they're able to provide us progress reports and updates and things that are mental health, and then they are willing to- And then they are willing to also meet with our mental health professionals and give more oral, this is how it's going, this is what we're work, those types of things. So there's certain things legally that we just could never see.
Right. And just to be clear, I, I'm all about kids getting all the help they can possibly get.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that, absolutely.
But I also don't want to be on the front page of the newspaper saying, "Raypek School District hosts site for fraudulent Medicaid billing."
Medicaid fraud. No, we would, no, we have no interest in that.
Who is the liaison person then between the parents and these professionals?
They are, there is a lot of, um, parent involvement even in the entry process, a lot. Um, they have to complete a lot of information and then be willing and want this to, to take place. The parents are involved heavily pretty much all along the way, because if they're not, they know often that the therapy's not effective. I mean, you want to be, um, and involve the family in the entire process, so, there's a lot of feedback given to the families.
Okay, the last thing, I mean, we're going to have our attorney involved. Okay. Because at the end of the day, we're inviting a third party into our building and our names are on the line. I mean, I think the school board is liable, right, to some extent, because if we invite a third party in, and so I would like to have some questions answered by our attorney. I think we're a hundred percent going to go forward in my mind, but I want to know that we're covered and that our contract covers us and that we're not going to be on the hook. A, we want to not have to even worry about being on the hook because there's nothing to be on the hook for.
That'd be good, that'd be good.
Because we're providing excellent service and being an excellent, you know, provider.
Right, right. Yeah, no. Point well taken.
And this is new ground for us, but this is not new ground for us, school districts, compass and our attorney.
We are not early adopters on this model, and sometimes that's nice, because a lot of the bugs and kinks on even that area, Kim, that you're referring to, have been worked out. But great, great points.
Thanks for your work on that.
Yeah, thank you guys. Okay, on to community partnerships.
Okay, so the one last topic area we have is related to another area of our strategic plan, and that's to try to expand and build on our community partnerships. So when I say community partnerships, I'm using a very broad description of a lot of different things that happen now, uh, what I would consider at a very informal level. So, community partnerships are all those PTA, PTO, booster club type groups, foundation, uh, Raypek Cares. All of those groups are part of that informal network. We've got, uh, we recognized even a church last month at the board meeting about, you know, the way they've adopted one of our schools and so forth. So, a lot of things at that level. And then you get into a lot of other community and civic organizations that support us. We have great partnerships with our cities and our law enforcement organizations in the community and things of that sort. But where I think we might be missing great opportunities are more into the, uh, business community, the employment sector, workforce development, uh, as examples. And then, and maybe even just providing more structure and opportunities for all of our community engaged and, in one way or another. So, I will just tell you from trying to work on this personally, as one of my goals this year, uh, it takes a lot of time to build those relationships. As an example, uh, it took us between three and four weeks to get the right person at Honeywell to call us back and then get scheduled for an interview to talk about what the opportunities of partnering with Honeywell would be, and which is the, probably the closest advanced manufacturer of size in our neighborhood, if you will. So we finally had that conference call last week, um, and, and we are really excited about what that might lead to, uh, for our district and our students. But we, we've thought of a, a position that's even mentioned in our strategic plan about having some staffing allocation. Whether it's a new position or repurposing an existing position to where we could have somebody that would just focus on those connections. The, the, where I see the real benefit is, that kind of person potentially could tie us into programs that have access to grants or, uh, there are a lot of the, uh, STEM area businesses that are so hungry for qualified, uh, workforce entry-level folks that they would almost certainly be willing to help fund things that we want to do and expand with the right, with the right connections. And so, rather than that being just an informal happenstance, having somebody dedicated to that, um, could, could really return some, some high results for us as a district. We kind of bull, brainstormed some bullets here of some of those job duties, potentially, and so you've got that list there. And, and the other piece of that that's tied into that strategic plan are the last couple of bullets, that not only can they work on building those outside connections, hopefully if we're, if we're seeking out somebody with marketing and communication skills, they can be training our staff to do more and do better in terms of their communication process, so that it's a good two-way, uh, connection. So, when I compare this type of position to some of the others we've talked about above, it's not as time-sensitive, obviously. I would tell you as a board, we could probably wait till our regular spring budget timeline and make that decision and still hire a high-quality person, compared to some of the things above it, but I do think there's an opportunity either now and the not-too-distant future for us to look at that type of position. We collected the job description for the person in Lee Summit. They have, uh, a department that has multiple people in it. In larger districts, it's not uncommon. If they're managing volunteer efforts across the district, that they have multiple people. But for us at our size, one person could go a long ways, I think, in potentially, uh, helping us in this field. Working with individual, uh, programs and departments to try to help them build partnerships and then kind of being the point person for, um, a more formalized effort of engagement with our community. So, it's big picture at this point. Um, it is something that's addressed in our plan, so I just wanted to get that on the list in front of you as well and get your feedback on what your thoughts on this particular idea would be.
Thoughts and comments?
I, I think it's a good idea. I think that, um, this person would have to hit the ground running and deliver some results quickly for it to be justified from a taxpayer perspective. So they'd probably have about six or twelve months to deliver something, right? Because it would be a significant expense and, you know, they wouldn't have too much luxury of time, I don't think, to be justified. Secondly, it seems like a part-time, a half-time, not full-time. I mean, I think we would hire them full-time, but I, to your point, I think there are other things they could do. And, uh, I very much like your, um, bullet point about the communications. I think for many years, we've asked for additional communication support. I'd say nine years we've asked for-
Been discussed, yes.
Additional communication. I, I know of nine years of which we've asked for additional communication support. And so, um, the current communications are in good shape, but there's more that needs to be done. From my perspective, I would expect this to be that person and their other half-time. I don't speak for the entire board.
Well, and we've talked about it as being a PR-type person that's branding our district.
Right. Helping with the communications, with our external communications, with parents and, and with the community. So not just the community, but the, but the parents. And, um, I like what you said about helping train, um, staff, because you can't expect every person in this school district to be, uh, every employee to be an excellent, you know, a communications expert. And so I very much like the idea of having this person train and provide support and tools in that regard, so, um, I like it.
Are there other districts that are partnering with businesses, like some that are in the more metropolitan area, and how is that going?
Crystal, you want to share some examples? You've been closer to that.
Yeah, there are several other districts surrounding us, you know, particularly, you know, Lee Summit does some partnerships, like with Cerner, for example. They have a really strong partnership that we honestly could kind of latch on to as well. Um, North Kansas City has a really, really strong partnerships and kids have internships. Some of them paid, some of them not. But the beauty of those kind of things is that students who have internships, it's a win-win, because if, if I as the business partner love the intern, then I can hire you once you're graduated and it's a win for the student. The student gets to figure out if that's really what they want to do. And if so, then that is, you know, they already have that sort of connection. Uh, in certain areas, particularly like, um, computer science, advanced manufacturing and biomedical, the need far outweighs the pipeline. And so in advanced manufacturing alone, there are thousands and thousands of jobs that are be opening up and hundreds and hundreds of people retiring. And they don't know what they're going to do. So I think businesses are hungry for that young blood in a way that they never have been, because their average age is, of their current employees, like fifty. That's a dangerous place to be for them, so I think it's a good time.
With really high levels of pay that are, that we could, um, provide a lot of opportunity for our students and, um-
Students could come right out of high school and then get some certifications, either while they were in high school or shortly after, and still walk away with a sixty, sixty-five thousand dollar job. That's a great position for our kids to be in. Or they could be doing, you know, some things like that while they're earning their associate's degree and moving to that next level.
It's getting their foot in the door for a lot of them to get that good job.
Well, and even just job shadowing, a couple days a week. Like you said, some internships pay and some don't. And I know where I work, they said they used to do job shadowing and I guess it kind of fell by the, I don't know what happened. Kind of fell by the wayside, and we're manufacturing, and you're right, we have a lot of people that are, you know, getting close to retiring.
It's a little scary. And these kind of opportunities give kids a, a chance to figure out if that's what they want to do or not. I mean, I have always said college is very expensive career exploration. Internships and job shadowing is, is not. And better to find out when I'm eighteen and a senior that I don't want to be a geneticist, which is what I thought I was going to be, than to find out, you know, four years into a college degree that I end up never using.
Today I was able to connect finally with the, a gentleman who works for Garmin, but he's more on the production side. He's not necessarily into the workforce development side per se, but he is the local president for the Society of Manufacturing Engineers, I think is his, his title. And so I was kind of quizzing him about this whole topic, and there, um, and we've talked about this at different levels throughout time. You know, we've, we've had so much focus on the four-year college track that we've, uh, got a, a big chunk of our students who I think would be, uh, well-served by having that right certificate or short-term training program that's two years or less. Uh, maybe even something we could do within high school setting. Uh, our, our folks at Honeywell tell us that their entry-level production jobs start at twenty-eight to thirty dollars an hour. Start at, okay? So, um, and he, this gentleman I was speaking with said, I've got two graduates with liberal arts degrees that are basically making close to minimum wage, because it didn't get them to a path that led to a high-wage job, so.
Well, and I think to Kim's point earlier, you know, we, I could definitely see this being a, a two-pronged person. You know, the, the PR side and promoting our district and getting those partnerships, and then the communication piece as well. I think it could tie into strategic plan on both sides there.
Yeah.
Well, I took Jacob to work with me one day, to speak for whatever reason, and they had him out there doing some things, so. And it kind of piqued his interest, and he's, you know, got four years still left of high school, so his mind started turning. Is this something I'd want to do? So even at a young, you know, just like the Take Your Kid to Work Day-
Yeah.
-type thing. You know, those are things that we used to give off for that day. I don't know what happened, but, um, you know, Kevin went to work with me a few times and he's like this, and you want, uh-uh. I said, what I want to do. So, it kind of gives them that, of course, I do boring accounting stuff, but, um, so it kind of gives them the more, probably not so much hands-on unless the company is wanting them to do hands-on, but it just gets their mind thinking. Because I did walk Jacob around to each of our departments and, you know, he's like, wow, this is, you know, I mean, we make things from poker chips to stuff for Honeywell. So, you know, we've got a wide range of stuff that we make, so.
Part of the reason why I think at some point we've got to make more investment in this type of position is because we don't have the advantage of having these manufacturers in our backyard. They're not that close as compared to, when North Kansas City talks about this, they're mostly working with people that are already in their district that are reaching out to them. We're in a position where we're going to have to do more reaching out ourselves, so, uh, that adds a little bit more layer of complication in time, so.
Billy, did you have any comments?
He's unmuting. Also, um-
Nope, I'm just listening, thank you.
Also, it just, with contemplating things that we could bring in district two, we do still have some avai, available capacity at, um, the academy building. I would really like to see us bring something in. I know we can't be Lee Summit Technical School, but we could have one or two things if we knew what those were and had the high enough demand for it.
That's the exact conversations we've been having, so.
I'm-
You're on the same wavelength, just nodding, yes, we could.
So what kind of answers do you need from us tonight?
That's kind of where we're at now at this point. So, as I kind of started out with, that, you know, several of these require FTE, some of which, especially among the certified staff, the sooner we can make a decision, the better. And we had conversa, I'll just use strings as an example. We've had conversations over a couple of years about that. And if we wait till the March, um, budget, March-April budget normal timeline, we're almost too late for next year, so it's going to become automatically by default probably the year after. So, if we want to move forward with any of these, especially the ones that involve a certified position, the elementary modern language strings orchestra, or even this mental health position, any of those would have the advantage of the sooner we make that decision, the better. And with the, uh, support of Proposition RP, we do have the resources to make those decisions now without fear of not being able to fill our classrooms next year for just, you know, handling growth and things of that sort. Now, I'm going to qualify that a little bit, because if we do all of this, obviously there's enough dollars there that it does get into our overall, uh, allocation of how much we can put into salary improvements and things like that. So it's not a vacuum. It's all going to work together. I would tell you from my perspective, based on the conversation we heard tonight, if, if we really believe we're going to move forward with that psych examiner or that psychological, what's your, uh, psych, school psychologist. I'm still in the old language here. School, school psychologist and/or strings, and it sounds like you want a little more background on the elementary, uh, foreign language, the sooner we can make that call, the better. In fact, um, I would argue that on the strings, if we want to get it in the course guides for enrollment purposes, we need to pull the trigger on that. Probably now. I mean, meaning right away, um, for that position. The, the elementary foreign language and the, and the school psychologists aren't quite as timely, but the school psychologists I'd probably put in that same category. If those two were positions you were ready to support, we'd bring them to you for approval so we can get started.
Comments from the board?
Just a quick question. On the strings, if we did it in middle school, that would be an elective, just like they have other elective.
Yes.
So it would be a semester class?
So, there's no-
Oh, no, it'd be a year long.
It's not like the language where we'd have to restructure stuff and-
No, no.
No, they just have more choices among their elective cycles.
Yep.
So we would implement it at the middle school level first, before we went to the high school?
Right. With the caveat that I, I, I'm okay with putting it in the course catalog, and I don't know, Crystal, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we could put it in there and see what the interest really is, and then decide later if we want to add. If we can't make it work in one person's schedule to cover a class at the high school, then, then we might look at a part-time, if there's interest there.
I would agree. That's the beauty of the high school schedule. If it makes, it makes. If it doesn't, you know, they shift kids other places.
Lots of other courses that just don't get the interest, so we-
Well, and it would just be a one-
Yeah.
Time slot, basically.
Single section, yeah.
So do we have a consensus then for them on the strings and orchestra to move forward on the middle school level and then add the class at the high school level and see what the interest is?
Yeah.
Can I go ahead and make a motion?
No, we're not deciding tonight. We'll bring it to you next week at the regular meeting.
Okay.
Billy, did you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I agree, um, you know, that we need to be proactive and get this stuff in if, if, if this is something we're going to do. And that's it.
Okay.
And then the other one would be the school psychologists, if you're comfortable with that. I think we're ready to repost that position as a different position and bring that to you. At first as a position change, and then second as a higher.
Are we all okay with that? Billy, you okay with that?
Yes, definitely.
Well, and that falls right in line with our, our strategic plan and everything we've been focusing on, so I think that's a good choice and good decision.
So we can bring those two to you next week for position approvals, and then, and probably by the January work session, we can come back to you with some more information on the elementary, uh, foreign language piece.
And that would still leave us time if we chose to do something next year, okay?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay there.
And as we're talking about, as we get into budget, you know, which is coming up sooner than we all think, right? And looking at the other things we talked about tonight, um, perhaps in some of your forecasting that you do, could you show us some different scenarios? Um, in my mind, I am thinking we need to keep back some money. So as our mental health department grows and we figure out what that means and what we need to do, I personally would like to see us set aside some of our recurring annual funds to hold maybe two positions open or something. Or maybe that's three, or maybe it's one and a half, or I, I don't know, some amount of something. I don't want to spend everything that was granted to us by our tax increase, um, when I really think there's expansion that's needed staff-wise and mental health.
Good point.
We can do that.
Yep.
And on the community partnership, just, we'll talk about that later.
My thought there is we'd work on a more formalized job description and then have that be part of our normal budget discussion in the spring, because I think that's a field that's not a certified field. There's-